Monday, June fifth, two thousand seventeen, six, six thirty-one, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Uh, we have minutes from May twenty-second to approve. Did we have another, um, set of minutes that we tabled at one point?
I think they were executive. Two or three?
Okay, so we're still what, okay, alright. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
An executive session?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, so, anybody else who did not get a chance to look at it?
I looked at them.
Okay. Alright, so we can, wait, did you get a chance, okay. Alright, so is there a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-second?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any edits, questions, comments? Okay, all in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Visitor's comments, we don't have any visitor's comments. Okay, moving on to student rep who's not gonna be here tonight. Um, new business, Crystal.
Yes, so I'm here to, um, present the class trip for next year, so, uh, the seniors' class of twenty eighteen. Um, we would like to, or the students have chosen, um, to go to Woodlock in Poconos, Pennsylvania. Um, it's basically High Meadows, um, where you do games and activities throughout the whole day, but food's included and rooms also included as far as the living arrangements. So, um, what I did is I printed out a proposal of what it would cost per student just to go there. That doesn't count the bus ride that it's gonna take to get there. Um, and we're also trying to work on, um, or exploring, uh, nursing as far as whether a nurse has to come with us or not.
Okay.
Which might be an additional cost if that has to happen. So I did print out a copy, a printout of seven.
Thank you.
Hopefully that's enough. Um, I know, um,
Thank you.
the superintendent also put it in the shared folder. Um, so this just gives you an idea of the accommodations. The rates are based on how many kids are gonna share a room. So obviously we would not have co-ed, so it'd be boys in one room, girls in another room. Um, there is twenty-four hour, um, emergency response onsite, so they have EMTs there available twenty-four hours a day. And the nearest hospital and urgent care facility is ten to fifteen minutes away depending on traffic. So we did, um, also look into that as well. And as far as the activities, if you look where it says activities included, they have bumper cars, go-karts, bumper boats, which they were extremely excited about, uh, go-karts, archery, biking, um, bounce, shuffleboard, paddle boats, rowboats, indoor basketball, indoor pool and water slide, sports complex, tennis, horseshoes, mini golf, trap shoot contest, um, Wii game room, rock climbing wall, evening entertainment, horse racing games, scavenger hunt, family Olympics, karaoke, family feud and bingo, as well as other indoor activities that they also will host. Um, especially if it's raining out, they do a lot of indoor things for the kids as well. So it's basically, we would leave, if you've noticed the dates underneath the pictures, we would leave on May fourth. Um, it's gonna include dinner on Friday, so as long as we get there by four or five, and it's a four-hour drive. So we're thinking about leaving around one, um, twelve or one on Friday afternoon, and then coming back Sunday evening is what we're looking at doing. And it includes six meals, so we'll include the students' foods as well while we're there. They also have ice cream bar and a whole bunch of other snack bars that the kids can also participate in. Um, and then what they did also is they sent like an activity calendar where it has the morning activities, afternoon activities. Afternoon activities, I apologize, it did cut off some of the, um, evening activities, but this is just a sample of some of the things that they offer there as well. So originally, um, they wanted to go to Boston. Then they found out the seniors this year were going to Boston, so of course they can't do the same thing. So we had to change it.
It does.
And if you're interested as well, I also have the directions for the trip and then just a map of where we are and where we would be traveling. So I also have that as well.
Question? I'm sorry, were you done with your presentation?
I think so, um, I know the students really wanna go. It was an overwhelming vote, there's about sixty, a little over sixty in the class, and fifty of them, um, voted yes on this trip. So I don't know if that guarantees that everyone will go. Um, I really think what it comes down to is cost. We would fundraise for it just to lower the cost for the students. So, um, last year when we went to the Body World exhibit for my anatomy class, we fundraised Krispy Kreme donuts and raised over fifteen hundred dollars, and that paid for the bus and for the kids to get into the exhibit. Obviously fifteen hundred dollars isn't gonna pay for that, but at least hopefully it will cover the bus ride. And then we could also look to do a fundraiser where individually they're bringing their own cost down based on how much they sell. I know this year the seniors did, uh, Boston Red Sox game. They raffled off four tickets, and so the more they sold, the less they paid to go on their trip. So we were looking to do something like that, especially for the students who can't afford that.
Yep.
So the two sixty-three doesn't include the transportation again?
It doesn't include the transportation or if we have to have a nurse come with us.
But what about all the other activities, are?
All of them are included, all inclusive.
But are they all at the resort or?
I'm sorry?
So are they all at the resort or are they gonna be additional charge?
Yeah, nope, they're all at the resort and they're all included.
Uh, how much is transportation roughly, do you know?
Um, I'm waiting for a quote. I've, I put a, um, email out to Peter Pan as well as King Word, which are two of the cheaper companies around here. We might even have to reach out to a Pennsylvania company, I would assume that Peter Pan's there, but I don't know. So I'm waiting to hear back from them first before we explore other options.
Um, how many chaperones would you say you're intending?
It depends, um, by law it's supposed to be one chaperone per ten students.
And we're gonna do that, okay.
So it really depends on how many students we end up with, how many chaperones we have to have, but the chaperones go for free according to, um, our contact at Woodlock. As long as there's ten students, the chaperone goes for free. So it's not an additional cost that the students will have to pick up.
Alright. Um, until you gave us the, um, the schedules, schedule of activities, I was gonna ask you whether this is a place where young folks go, but it looks like they have a lot of activities.
It's a family resort.
It is?
Yep, so it's not like a, um, spring break, like, you know, like, it's a family resort with activities that they'll do, um, throughout the weekend.
But they are familiar with, uh, high schools or other schools coming along?
Yes, um, they actually do have, uh, the original place that we went to was also in Poconos Valley, it was Poconos Resort. They were booked up, they booked, uh, they book up two years in advance.
Uh-huh, good for them.
Um, this one is also geared towards family, but it's also geared towards businesses too, or big group or large groups that wanna come together and team build. So that's what this one is also about as well.
Okay. Did the students know about the price before they voted?
Yep.
Okay.
They did.
And they know that there will be additional costs when we get transportation and everything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have a, do you have an alternative, if for whatever reason this doesn't happen, the cost becomes exorbitant or whatever it might be?
Well, they had said that they would, if this doesn't work out, that Boston would be something that they would wanna explore. Um, but the main one that they wanted was Canada, and I told them no. I will not take eighteen-year-olds to Canada, nor will we cross the border with passports. So I thought Canada was out of the question.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the, this trip.
A second?
Is there a second?
Mike?
Yeah. Alright, um, my only comment would be if anything changes, if you feel like the price or some other reason, uh, causes your numbers to go down, we always want more, more students to participate in their senior trip,
Right.
so I'm sure you'll, you'll let us know. And absolutely if there is any way to, uh, fundraise to make it, uh, uh, more reasonable for, for the students, that would be even better.
Okay. Is there a likelihood that there would be six in a room?
Um, I would think so because we have at least thirty girls, at least, um, going up numbers. You know, even if you have half-half, there's at least five rooms with six in it. Um, and I think it is doable, I mean, obviously the girls are gonna be fighting over the bathroom, but it's something they can work around.
Team building.
But I think it's, yeah. I think it would be doable, they just don't have to concentrate on their hair so much because they're gonna be going swimming, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, all in favor to approve the senior trip plan for class of two thousand eighteen, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much, Crystal.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Chartwell's contract.
Yes, so school committee had asked for the Chartwell's contract to be put into the, uh, shared folder, um, and so it is there for you for review.
I'm gonna do it.
It's been a little busy.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance, there's no way I'm gonna do that.
If there is.
I'm not sure that we really wanted to do anything, I mean, it's a contract and it's signed already,
Right, yep.
but we wanted to have the reference available to us because, especially because of one section where there's a mention that if we do not, if there's a deficit.
Yes.
Uh, they, they go into their management fee first and they try to make up for it from their management fee, and that was the, what do we call this, no loss, no loss contract or something to that effect that there weren't going to be any loss, probably assuming that the deficit wasn't gonna go to the levels that it had
Mm-hmm.
uh, in the last, uh, couple of years, but this year we seem to be in a much better shape.
Mm-hmm.
Um, hopefully it remains that way or it goes down the more. Uh, and if the contract, we're reading it correctly, uh, most of that will be covered by management fees.
They will be here on the nineteenth, uh, to present their, um, month review, so.
And that would be for the end of May?
May.
Okay. So we're gonna have one more report after that. Do you know if they see, they probably do see it and, uh, feel it, but is it a huge challenge, uh, for them to serve East Meadow, go back and forth?
I think it's a logistical issue, you know, it does certainly add to the labor, um, and certainly on our end, I'd like to, while you bring that up, um, say thank you to the custodians who have, uh, been moving, uh, lunches and materials back and forth, um, but everyone really has pitched in and, and made a good effort to make this solid for the kids and as least interruptive as possible, so.
Yeah, we, we thank them as well, but it's not easy to have, uh, construction in the middle of the campus. But hopefully it's, it's gonna come together.
Yeah.
Fairly soon, as I was driving by it yesterday, I noticed that, uh, at least part of the foundation is there. Is that the whole foundation, is that the whole foot, uh, footprint?
Um, I do, actually, I think the whole footprint is down, yes, yep.
Is it? Okay. Alright, I also saw a bell nodding yes. Those things always look small to me, I'm looking for this, you know,
Yeah.
lofty thing, but, uh, it was good to see that the foundation was in.
And the steel's gonna be dropped, so.
Okay, that's good. Uh, unrelated, but, uh, if we have the answer, do we know what time the groundbreaking ceremony is gonna be on the twentieth?
We were, we just got an email from Tim today, I think,
Yes.
to verify that and to put all those details together.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that would be good, uh, one, for some of us to be able to schedule around it, uh, number two, to be able to publicize.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, anything else on Chartwell's contract?
No, I just, um, when is it, when is it up for, like, is it up for bid this year or just how we talked about?
It's a one-year extension.
Yeah, but it's at, at the end of this month that we decide?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's all we have for new business, moving to old business under strategic plan and review. Do we have anything on that one?
I actually, um, put into your, um, shared folder a strategic plan overview document,
Right.
um, because one of the things that we had wanted to talk about as we introduced, um, the, uh, budget, um, and some of the reductions that we're looking at, um, if, uh, we don't have the town, uh, meeting vote, um, positively, um, was to review the strategic plan, so, um, it's called strategic plan overview. Um, and what I did was, is I just took the goals, uh, that were part of the plan and then some of, uh, the action steps in each of the goals and just checked the ones that you have already accomplished as school committee, um, which I think sets the stage, uh, well for, uh, what we're doing moving forward. Um, so for goal one, which is to implement the pre-K twelve curricula, um, we have developed the professional development for all administrators and faculty. Uh, we've done that, uh, for the second half of this year, moving into next year. Um, we will work with a work group to establish the three-year curriculum development plan, um, and then to implement that plan, um, that is directly tied to resources, so I don't want to hide that, but when you write curriculum and look at resources, um, that does need to have a funding stream attached to it. So we will be looking to develop that. Your goal two, which is, um, Granby Public Schools leadership team will exemplify transparency and trustworthiness and engage with all members of the school district and community. You had decided to hire a superintendent. Um, and hire a permanent director of pupil ser- pupil services. So we're, we're thrilled, we're thrilled that we are here. Um, the next thing that we will be doing as a team is creating the framework that the leadership team will use to inform and engage stakeholders. Um, some of you are aware, we're, um, overhauling the school website. Uh, we have, um, put out a Facebook page, we have, uh, tried to sustain Twitter, um, and those are things that the team will be working on, um, over the summer, um, so that we can truly communicate, um, with all stakeholders. Uh, I think one of the things we're forgetting is not everybody has a computer, somebody reminded me of that today. Um, and so, um, keeping that in mind. Let's see, uh, the next goal was to provide the necessary technology to support curricular needs. Um, this is one where we have no checks, unfortunately. Um, we do, uh, David and I have been trying to sit down and do the, uh, three-year technology plan. Um, uh, that's something we need to get back to. Um, the update of the networked infrastructure to support the needs of end users, that will be, um, part certainly of the new building, so the elementary level, uh, will have the necessary upgrades. Then we'll have to focus on the work here, um, and that had been part of, uh, the request in the budget this year for some, um, server upgrades and infrastructure upgrades, uh, but something again in the budget, uh, that seems to get, uh, pushed aside. Um, there was increased techno- technical support and implement a help desk, um, and obtain a data management system to provide, uh, data-driven decision-making framework. Um, so none of those things unfortunately have we, um, been able to move on. Um, and then finally develop modern facilities that support authentic learning environments. Um, to the credit of the school committee and the community, um, you did positively support the vote for the building of the East Meadow, uh, West Street Elementary School, um, and that is underway. Uh, there is a five-year capital plan that was approved by school committee, um, but given the approval of the elementary, that probably needs to be revised moving forward. Um, and then we would be implementing that in phases. Um, so some of what is talked about in the capital plan, uh, needs to be taken out uh, because it's been successfully, um, worked on, and so then it'll allow us to focus on some of the needs, I think, uh, we could all agree, um, are here in this building, um, moving forward.
To, to be honest with you, I think regardless of, uh, what happens, we have to review this strategic plan anyway.
Yep.
Um, I, I think it was a good starting point for all of us. Uh, it, it took some effort to put it together. In fact, I don't know that there was a separate strategic plan before we put this together. We mostly relied on our, uh, district improvement plans and,
Mm-hmm.
uh, many times we got lost in it. This was a clear strategic plan that, uh, came together, but some of these things, as you were reading, they're, you know, they need to be updated or we need to put a lot more, uh, guidance around it to me, to, to explain what they mean really. There are some things that, uh, I don't know they still make sense even to us, so we have to, uh, work on that. The other thing is you just mentioned that on the technology side, yeah, because of the resources, we were slow to, uh, do the implementation of technology, but we need to have the technology plan regardless, because without the plan, we can't really make our case for technology improvements, so.
Sure.
Um, if we can, if we can do anything to expedite that, that would be awesome. Uh, in, uh, do we have, um, community, uh, membership on that group that put together the plan?
That, there was.
Or is it just you and Dave at this point?
Oh, on the plan, um, at this point I thought it would be, uh, David and I. Uh, really it's, um, to align with the state requirements of the technology plan as well. Um, but certainly it would be, uh, a good idea to have community members on it, sure.
Cause we met a couple of, uh, folks at East Meadow, remember?
Right.
Now, they were, uh, professionals who knew how to put these things together, why not just engage them?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions on the strategic plan?
So we're probably gonna want that on an agenda after we get through budget.
Yes.
Yeah, so my thought was that, um, I'll be doing the entry plan findings on June nineteenth, and I think that would allow an opportunity to reconvene the committee, the strategic plan committee, with staff and community members, and then kinda take a look at the plan and what our, uh, strategic action steps might be, um, given, uh, the review of the district and where we are and, and how to move forward. And to your point, I think having, um, more strategic action steps and more people involved in actually, um, implementing those.
Yeah. Yeah, and one thing that seems to be missing is some, uh, clarity around that, uh, pre-K twelve curricula
Yes.
that we talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have three bullets, one of them already done, but the other ones are referring to development plan, but there is nothing clear really around that, and we already started doing work, so some of it will even be re- you know, retroactive.
Yep.
We're gonna have to really, uh, uh, work on that and make sure that it's clear to everyone. Because the more we mention this, the more folks are gonna, uh, be looking for it, and they're gonna want to understand it, and they should, uh, want to understand it. Uh, so we, we need, you know, we need to, uh, do some work around this.
And I think when, you, we talked at the finance committee, um, the idea of having measurable outcomes, you know, for that goal in particular, um, when we integrate the assessment system to the curriculum and we start measuring that and we start talking about meeting goals and meeting objectives and having a percentage of students be at or above grade level at all of our, in all of our classrooms, I think you'll start to see people understand how it's all tied together. Um, so that's exciting, and I think, you know, um, over the summer, that's the work of the leadership team to put those measures in place. Um, uh, so we'll talk about school choice in a minute, um, but where we're finding data, where we're housing data, whether it's easy for us to use the data, you know, to the point about a data management system, it's a, we're a little all over the place, um, which is one of the things I discovered in the entry plan and trying to find things is, um, it's in disparate spots. So working on that to make it more streamlined and so that we're communicating the goals of the district and that we're meeting those goals or not, and why not?
My only concern about the entry plan on the nineteenth is that we have the, um, mallet question coming up on the twenty-sixth, and I know that we have a lot of prep work for that, still.
Okay.
So I'm just throwing it out there. If we're gonna, if we're gonna be committing that meeting to any last-minute, you know, prep for.
Yeah, we can see that, if, if we need to table it, we can table it, but, uh,
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, for now. And, and one last note, when we've started doing the strategic plan, we were really, you know, in a different place. We were hoping to find things that would bring everybody together, and it, the fact that there were a lot of community members and, uh, we had teachers, we had administrators, it was just to be able to, uh, pick everyone's brains and put something that is meaningful together. At least from my perspective, uh, it seems that we are in a much better place as far as, uh, our direction, understanding where we want to go and where we are going. Uh, so again, even from that perspective alone, just, we owe it to ourselves at the very least to make updates so that it really reflects what we're talking about
Right.
when we, you know, meet with the town meeting or other committees or the public.
Mm-hmm. I, and I think, you know, to go back to the plan, there are some things that the committee has, um, supported and dedicated resources, time, energy, talent, money to. A good example is social emotional learning, peace builder curriculum in the entire district. That isn't easily reflected in the strategic plan unless you kind of look at it as a curricula, um, and embedded in there, but those are pieces, I think, that are getting lost, that we're not communicating well, the good work that's been going on. Um, and then to the second part of that, how are we measuring it? So what are we seeing in schools? Are we seeing less reporting of bullying? Are we seeing, um, less suspensions, less referrals to the, um, for discipline? Are we, um, are we having, um, more students participating in school meetings, earning, um, tickets? You know, being, uh, peace builders, those kinds of things. One of the, you know, anecdotal things we hear is, is when families come in and say, oh, my kid told me I was not being a peace builder. Uh, but those we need to capture somehow. Um, and that is getting lost, I think, um, in part of the, uh, uh, strategic plan that doesn't specifically address it. And it's a big part of what we do every day, uh, for students in Granby, so.
Well, we kinda knew that with the initial strategic plan, that this was, you know, I mean, that was a big undertaking.
It was.
So we kinda knew that we were gonna be revising and, uh, tweaking it as we went along.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So tho- that, those are really good points. Now I think we have to start drilling down and getting into the details so we can start measuring.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Um.
Absolutely, great points. Anybody else? Okay, so moving to FY seventeen budget.
Um, Mark is not here tonight, he will be here, uh, for the second. Um, so I know that you had some questions on the warrant, but, um, he will get back to me on that.
Okay, um, do we know anything about where we are, or is that gonna be all part of the presentation of the nineteenth?
It'll be part of the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, how about eighteen?
Eighteen, so let me just, um, so for eighteen, uh, there are no current changes to, um, either the, uh, uh, potential gap, uh, the six ninety-one, uh, nor the reductions. Um, those are still all, um, in effect, um, and didn't know if the committee wanted to discuss any more of that. Um, I did put a document in that answered some of your questions regarding, uh, more specifics about what the reductions would mean, um, in terms of the kinds of classes that may not be offered, uh, the impact in terms of class sizes, uh, and those kinds of things, um.
This is good, Emma, I think we should have some more conversation around this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't know how many folks watch it or how, how well-versed even we are in some of these things because we did not really see the details, but it is anywhere from us having to change graduation requirements because we're gonna have to tweak things, which is a big thing, I mean, I don't know if it's understood that it's a big thing, to eliminating some, uh, electives, um.
Do you want me to go through it?
Eliminating some of the classes, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, um, this is a document that we started with last time, um, and you asked for some more detail around, so considerations regarding the reductions. Um, I think first and foremost, we have to understand that for any of these reductions at Granby Junior Senior High School, particularly at the high school level to occur, it means that we need to change our program of study and requirements for graduation. Um, Granby Public Schools requires that students take four lab courses in science and four courses in social studies. Um, the state of Massachusetts only requires three lab courses in science and really only two in social studies. So the recommendation, um, if we were to, uh, implement these, uh, serious reductions would be that, uh, the school committee take a vote so that, um, students, uh, would only be required to take three lab courses in science and three courses in social studies. That would allow us some flexibility in staffing, um.
That said, can you explain why we want to have four labs as opposed to three?
Well, I believe at the time that those changes were implemented, the idea was that the- Well, I believe at the time that those changes were implemented, the idea was that the courses would be more rigorous, so the course of study for students would be more rigorous. Um, I think that there might be a change in consideration of that, that if we were able to um, not be in a state of reduction, but actually use that um. Course load and uh, have students be taking uh, electives more along the lines of um, things like STEM. Or um, AP computer science, things that broaden their experience, that um, we actually uh, could support the development of students. Um, as equitably as if we required the science and the social study, the four years. One of the things you'll see is that when students are in four years of science and four years of social studies and they want to be in band, then all of a sudden, there's, and AP courses, there's a lot of conflicts in their schedule, so they can't fit everything in. So if you allow them a little bit more flexibility, then they may be able to take more um, of those elective courses. And if those courses are rigorous, then um, I don't see an issue uh, with the change.
Yes, I understand.
I think uh, the reason why they uh, required four also was because here in Granby, we do a two-year bio program.
Mm.
Everywhere else in the state, it's one year, so for two years, that was to the requirement for, Mass only requires three, because in general, all the other districts teach bio in one year.
Mm-hmm.
Which we are moving towards next year, um, teaching it in one year.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, they're not getting less, it's gonna be more rigorous, because they're gonna learn everything they're learning in two years in one year.
Mm.
Which is not something that is like new to the state, they do it everywhere in the state, it's just Granby is kind of a dinosaur and they're doing it for two years, for a long time.
Okay. Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah.
But, but, I guess my question here is, if um. If, if you had to do that, I thought, I thought there was, there was potentially gonna be some problems with um, with the electives that could be taught also. So, we wouldn't really be in a position to offer as many electives at the same time.
Correct, so it, one of the concerns is if you're making this change because of reductions in the budget, you actually are not going to be offer, you're not going to be able to offer the electives that you want to, absolutely.
It looks like thirteen reductions in electives.
Mm-hmm, so in ELA, uh, the reductions in electives are mythology, film, creative writing, um, all well-subscribed courses. In math, it's the business math and the personal finance, um, and I'll talk a little bit about the impact and why that is. In science, it's the environmental science, the anatomy and physiology, both um, courses are extremely well enrolled, um. Technically, environmental science is not an elective, it is uh, one of the uh, sciences that uh, students can take to meet the four uh, lab. Science courses requirement for Granby. Um, social studies, it's psychology, government, economics, legal studies and sociology. Um, and again, in social studies, government and economics, right now, are um, courses that students take to meet the criteria of having uh, four years of social studies. So, they're not really an elective, but um, I listed them sort of right now as electives.
So, are we saying all of these will be in January?
Eliminated, mm-hmm.
Eliminated.
Eliminated.
They don't, mm-hmm, we don't need, the kids don't need psychology and sociology to get into four-year old schools?
No.
They can take it at the entry level.
Okay.
Uh, environmental, I will say, will be detrimental to the students who are not science majors if you take that out of the curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
S- you, some people just aren't science people, you know, and they struggle really, really bad in chemistry and physics and even bio.
So.
That's gonna hurt hard.
Yeah. In general, what's happening in this type of reduction is uh, the flexibility in coursework that we allow for students, um, as Crystal is talking about. Who may not have a strength in science, or a strength in math, or a strength in English, and they're able to uh, earn their credits through a more flexible um, uh. Route. Those get eliminated and we start to see uh, a real reduction and straightening of the curriculum, so, you know, when math, I think is a good example. You know, we get rid of, uh, or we eliminate math nine and ten, and everyone now is in algebra and algebra two. Um, and so, that is a real constricting of the core instructional program. Um, so I don't want to hide that in any way, um, it is not a, I, I've said this a thousand times, every time I've said it, I don't recommend this. Um, but uh, with the budget, um, the way it is, the, this is what would happen in order to get the reduction, uh. Uh, to get to the reduction that we would be required to take.
And Cheryl, when you say well-attended classes, what do you mean by that?
Uh, so for example, um, environmental science, I think has twenty. Environmental science. Environmental science has um, twenty-two twelfth graders, sixth, eleventh graders, uh, enrolled currently, uh, for next year. Anatomy and physiology has thirteen, um. Business math, uh, personal finance had twenty-one, math nine sixteen, math twelve, I'm sorry, math ten ten, um, so.
Can we just add those numbers, please, to this?
So, if you go to the class impact for each department, um, if you look at math, for example, the elimination of math nine, ten and um, intro to algebra. Uh, so all of the students having to take algebra one as opposed to having alternative means that um, instead of a class size of seventeen, the class sizes will go to twenty-three point four. And for algebra two, instead of the class sizes being twenty-six, they'll go to tw- thirty-three. Um, uh, the elimination of business math and personal finance for our seniors means that all students would take advanced topics in algebra. Uh, which would mean, again, uh, a class size from seventeen to twenty-three point four. Um, that is the constricting of the program of studies, so students are really um, forced into one course.
You'd have a lab class with twenty-seven students in it.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, how do you even possibly do that? A lab class with twenty-seven students?
Those numbers are very important because last week, we had a visitor who was, you know, uh, making a suggestion, is it possible to.
That, right.
Uh, reduce the number of instructors to have so many students in one of.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're looking at a list of classrooms where we have many, many students. And that's what we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to enrich the curriculum, so students can take uh, these classes. All these twelve, from the top of my head, I know that my kids, uh, at least one of my kids, uh, took six.
Mm-hmm.
And they were some of his favorite classes.
Yes. Yeah.
And we're, we're basically, we're not talking about constricting really, right now, we're talking about.
Stripping, really.
Looking at education from this perspective, very narrow, and everybody go and take these classes.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yes.
And we should remind everyone that aside of those, uh, aside from those numbers that we should add, we should remind everyone that this is not really our recommendation.
Yes.
This is almost a mathematical uh, approach to showing what it means, eliminating some positions to make up for that gap.
Exorcism, mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Correct.
And that's why we're asking for what we're asking.
Yes.
Okay.
It takes the fun out of um, making your schedule, because I mean, I remember in high school, I couldn't wait to get to the electives and make my electives and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. I mean, for example, film, um, thirty-one students have signed up for film, twenty-one students for mythology, eighteen for creative writing.
Sure. Sure, well, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the other thing to remember with the elective courses is um, typically, those courses are multi-grade. So you have students who are interacting in a different way, um, with multi-uh, graded classrooms, um, and I think that's important to remember.
Needing students at all different levels.
Yes, and so that, um, they can have an experience with a student who might be a senior and they're a sophomore, and how enriching that is uh, for a student. Uh, to reach more, um, and, and really to excel in an area that they feel um, is within their strength. Um, and those are the things that in this kind of scenario, you begin to remove from the program, from the academic program. And again, I will say it again, this is in no way a recommendation, um, this isn't something that is um, uh, going to prepare uh, the Granby Public Schools, uh, moving forward.
The other thing that concerns me is um, the increased use of directed study.
Mm-hmm.
Which is just such dead space.
Right. Yep.
In, in a student's day.
And that, we can't really figure out until um, uh, students would have to be rescheduled, and then we would have to reschedule them into electives. And if those electives became oversubscribed, then they would fall into uh, directed study.
Okay.
Any um. Any theories on what that would look like?
No, I didn't get that far.
I'm just wondering if, if, how, how many students it would impact.
Yeah, um, what we're, yeah. Um, I don't think I put that in yet.
Seniors who take part, ready to go right for the electors?
Right, mm-hmm, right.
But at some point, you'd have a bottleneck.
Yeah.
Yes, and I think that we've talked about this before, where there are unfortunate circumstances where students take the same elective. Um, when you start to reduce the number of electives that students can take, they begin to have less option. And so, the uh, potential for them to just simply repeat, um, is there, uh, so that they don't have to have a.
Yeah. How do you earn, how do you earn credit for repeated courses?
Well, it's sort of, I think, what happens in English where, you know, you have um, two groups of uh, students, we have standards and honors being taught in the same class. Um, so I think that there's some flexibility there, that the teachers, the teachers do a tremendous job being flexible with students, um, but at some point, uh, that's not enough.
So, I think, I had a question, I think you started to answer it a little bit with that, let's answer. Going down that path, are we forced to kind of put, uh, put the class, you know, take the class rigor right in the middle, so some students would find it too, too, you know, too hard?
Right.
And then the other students would be like, this is not hard enough. So, so like when we were at graduation, Saturday, there was one girl going to Mount Royal, and one girl going to Amherst, that kind of starts.
So. Mm-hmm.
Starts to limit that possibility at the same time, because they don't, they don't have the right rigor to exceed in those schools.
Mm-hmm, so one of the things that this does protect, um, is our AP coursework. Um, so the most rigorous courses that are offered currently will continue to be offered currently. I think that there's a misperception that we are offering um, AP coursework of two and three students, that's not the case. Um, our AP courses uh, range from um, ten and eleven students all the way up to uh, twenty to twenty-five students. Um, and that's something that in meeting with the finance committee again, I would like to show them, uh, because there is this idea that we have very tiny, tiny, tiny classes, and that's very expensive to run. Um, and that's just not the case, uh, so I would like to correct that. Um, it does, uh, this does protect um, honors courses that we currently offer, um, and our standards courses. Um, it does however, limit um, students, as Crystal was talking about, um, who may not have an expertise or a strong interest in a, in a certain content like science. Um, to have some flexibility in, in the kind of science they take, or the kind of um, math they take. And, and I think that's where uh, we will run into, um, where we're not supporting the needs of all of our students.
Do you mind if I ask something or add something, and correct me if I'm going in the wrong direction? If there are students. Three students who would like to take a class, and we have a teacher who can uh, teach that class.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm assuming we, there may be some cases where we can uh, have that class.
Yes.
And the other option could be, if somebody wants to do an independent study.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
As an AP class.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we do that.
We're not looking for uh, large numbers, it's an independent study and, uh, so that may be available.
Mm-hmm. It's, it's possible that folks are seeing those numbers when they go to DESI, uh, data. Mm-hmm.
They see, you know, one, because it may be a independent study.
Sure.
Um, my, my son, for instance, has done one, uh, and, and they may think that, you know, we have all these very small classrooms across the entire high school.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
We're trying to optimize, but we're trying to also offer uh, a good variety of classes.
Mm-hmm.
So that it goes back to that word, uh, enrichment, how do we really? I mean, to be very honest, if we cut all these things, and then students start taking the same elective twice, and then, you know, s- some go to study hall, and some go uh. Only to a certain uh, type of classes because there is nothing else to offer. It's going to a school versus going to the school that we all want to, want them to go to.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And we don't, we should not really shy away from making that very clear, that what we are talking about is to make sure that we find the best way, the. Uh, the most effective and efficient way to offer uh, all these classes, so that students in this, in this district do not feel slighted. And they don't look at kids who are only a couple of miles away and say, you know, why, why can't, why don't we get that opportunity?
Mm-hmm.
I, I would hope that as a town, we're feeling that, uh, you know, in our hearts and minds as well, that this is not just a, a list of classes. This is, this is in many cases, uh, a huge impact on a student's uh, life. Uh, how they're gonna be enriched and how they're gonna go from this point on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there were, how many, how many people did we have uh, in that gym on uh, Saturday? Four hundred, five hundred?
I would think so, yeah.
Right? And all those folks have seen the kids who were sitting right in front of them.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it seems like we get very emotional and we uh, understand the importance of it on one day, because we see what's coming out of it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And then we tend to uh, forget what that means to us the rest of the year.
Mm-hmm.
We should really look at what those students are bringing to this community. Forget the uh, the one day, forget, you know, the successes that they have everywhere, whether it's academic or uh, athletic or artistic. We have to really understand that this is our community, it's not just, just numbers. The other thing that it seems to me is pushing us in this direction, and we can't really have this conversation, is because it al- almost always sounds like this is a debate between us, the five or six.
Mm-hmm.
And our community, we are members of this community.
Mm-hmm.
We are trying to make sure that our community gets the best, and our children as members of our community, they get the best as well.
Mm-hmm.
It is about them, and they never, they're never at the town meetings, they're never, you know, they're ne- they never get the opportunity to, to speak for themselves, so we have to do it on their behalf. This is not a matter of uh, us trying to uh, create lofty, lofty uh, programs. This is us trying to create uh, programs that will enrich these students that are so important to us, to the community.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I, I don't know, I really, I, I was, I wasn't feeling this fired up when I came here, but this list is incredible. This is basically eliminating a lot of things that most of our students find very, very valuable.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, that's the point that we need to get across, is you just said it so well, do we want our kids going to a school?
Mm-hmm.
Or do we want our kids walking out of here as, as, as our vision statement? You know, kids that are young adults that are prepared for the world.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And if we are eliminating, especially at the high school level, these, these electives, and even, I mean, ideally, I would love to see four years.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I mean, I know it might be antiquated, but, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't that be?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't that be wonderful?
Mm-hmm. I know, and the, the math, I mean, business math, personal finance. I mean, we're so lucky that we were able to offer that, every time I'd see the, you know, on Facebook, they should offer personal finance, and I used to always think, Granby does.
Mm-hmm.
And that, it's such a meaningful course.
And even government and economics nowadays, kids need that.
Yeah. A and P, I mean, those are the classes that set these kids up for success, not just in college, but in life.
Right.
And that's key, cause not all kids go to college. But all kids are gonna have bills to pay.
Yeah.
Right. We can't enrich, we can't enrich a student if we're not offering enriching courses, I mean, it's that simple.
And also.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we don't tell twenty-seven, twenty-eight students to go and take uh, one of these classes, and you're telling us that they are choosing to, these are electives.
Oh, yes, yep, yeah, I have the enrollment right here.
Right? And it seems like we will be telling these students that they cannot, that they cannot really take and enjoy and learn through these classes.
Mm-hmm.
And they're essential, I mean, we're not really talking anything extraordinary here, we're talking about uh, government, economics, legal studies, sociology, psychology, personal finance, business math, creative writing. Um, environmental science, anatomy and physiology, mythology, film. I know uh, Tim, G. Campbell's sponsor of film, right?
And we didn't even get to the middle school impact yet.
No.
Yeah.
Uh, so, the middle school impact, um, uh, really is in the organization of staff. So that uh, staff would be teaching both the seventh and the eighth grade in their content, um, so on a seven-period day, um. Um, so on a seven period day, um, a math teacher, for example, would be teaching five sections of math. Which would mean uh one of our high school uh teachers would have to come down and teach the um sixth. Uh, because we need three and three in order to have um decent class sizes. Um, but what that does mean um is that uh the middle school right now is organized and uh allows students um an enrichment period. Uh, where they take things like STEM or something like a, a creative writing and extension of an English course. Um, and it's also a time that um students can benefit uh from additional uh support from their teachers. So if they are uh not understanding a concept, um teachers are available to them to uh get extra help. And um in a certain uh content area, uh that uh would no longer be available to them. And that is something that uh students and their families find very um, very helpful as students transition uh through the middle school years. And those foundational skills are, are really critical to their success uh moving forward into the high school. Um, it does mean the elimination of middle school foreign language, I don't think that should be taken lightly. Um, uh, one of the things that it would allow um and may allow even if the reductions don't happen. Um, is the thought of having um students take math courses based on um some entrance criteria. So if we had eighth grade students ready for algebra, um being able to take an algebra one course. Um, so the high school and the middle school being on the same schedule is going to allow for that flexibility to happen. Um, and we have heard from families that um that was a hope of theirs, that uh students would be able to progress a little bit more quickly. Maybe through some of the math coursework in particular. Um, so we're happy that that um may be something we can put in place, um but would happen hopefully regardless of whether there was a reduction or not.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point and uh uh goes about, goes to what uh Mike was saying as well, at least on one side of the spectrum. That there are some students who don't feel challenged at their own levels. So if they have the opportunity to go and take some uh upper level classes, um that would benefit them. I had a conversation with someone whose uh, whose uh children are no longer in this district. And that was one of the reasons.
Mhm.
That the student, at least one of the uh students didn't feel challenged. Uh, because they were not allowed to take uh some of the uh more aggressive classes.
Mhm.
So I think it's good, but on the other side, that's an opportunity for those who would like to take advantage of that opportunity. But for those who may feel intimidated or they don't really want to take that higher level class. It may become even more stressful because now they're gonna be in a classroom where they're gonna be asked to do a lot more.
Mhm.
Than at their own level.
Mhm.
And a- and I think, you know, coming from that uh uh numerical technical background. I can attest to the fact that once you get intimidated and alienated from that. A lot of, a lot of uh people at that age tend to uh drop out.
Mhm.
Uh, because they think that it's not for them and I would like to think that math is for everybody.
Mhm.
Uh, science is for everybody, if we can get them to like it as opposed to make it stressful for them. So this may make it stressful, more stressful for some students.
Uh, so it doesn't have um much of an impact on class size, um, uh but it does impact the organization of the school. Um, and then uh I don't want us to forget that um part of the reduction is the reduction of the first grade uh position. Um, and there are three classes at uh first grade. Um, and the reduction of that would mean uh that grade one would go to twenty-two students.
From sixteen.
From sixteen.
Which is fairly dramatic, isn't it?
That is, that is a very dramatic increase at first grade.
It's, yes.
Yeah.
And as a matter of fact, um quite a bit of discussion at the elementary level has been around grade two. Um, and the fact that um moving students um that quickly and that at such a young age to a large class size. Um, is a challenge, um and trying to support, you know, um at the youngest grades, we seem to see the largest span of uh skill sets. And trying to make sure that we can address them all in that large of a class size uh at grade two has been a discussion. Um, and a concern, um especially as we talk about some of the impacts that our children um bring into the, their learning. Whether it's um a, a trauma or a social emotional learning need, a behavioral learning need. Um, or even an academic learning need. Um, those class sizes um don't allow us to be um as individualized as we would like to be at the youngest levels. And that's critical.
And one thing that we said many times and I don't think we can state enough. The assumption appears to be that when we make all these changes, the numbers will remain the same. And therefore, we're gonna be able to uh.
Mhm.
Have more students in some classes or optimize in some linear math way. These are the reasons why many folks did not want to be in our district in the last so many years.
Mhm.
The more we cut, the more we eliminated some of these classes, the larger the cl- it, the conversation, the discussion of it. Caused some folks to leave our district. And part of it is probably, I had, I was having this conversation uh this weekend again, related to the timing of the town meeting. But the timing of the town meeting doesn't even allow us to address some of these concerns folks already committed based on the conversation that we're having. So it is important for us to emphasize that this is not really our recommendation, but this is our, our duty basically. To say that if nothing goes the way we hope uh uh it will, then uh these are the scenarios we're looking at.
Mhm.
Which none of these options uh is uh 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 an easy option.
Mhm.
Uh, it's not really, it's not really helping anyone.
Mhm.
Okay, so is it, is it, is it gonna be possible to add the number of students who are taking those classes? And update the.
Taking which classes?
The electives.
All those electives, you gave us some numbers that were, you know, pretty dramatic, just see if you can add those.
For next year, mhm.
Yep. Mhm.
Cause we're gonna, we're gonna share all these with the community this week, uh hopefully a lot of people get to see these documents, right?
So, so you're asking, so if we cut all these classes, it's gonna impact one hundred and seventy students who are that number working these out, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for instance, uh take another extreme example, we eliminate a- athletics, right? What was the number, two, two-thirds of our students are doing some uh, some type of sports, right?
Two-thirds, two-thirds.
Mhm. Mhm.
Do we really want to do that? Do we really want to uh impact so many students? And this is not any different, this is the academic side of it, so we should make sure that everybody sees that.
Mhm.
Uh, and how dramatic these uh, these reductions would be.
Mhm.
Okay, thank you Cheryl for putting this together. Any questions on this?
On this?
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
How are you guys going to um get it out to the district or get it out, I should say to the parents?
Uh.
That's the next part of the conversation.
Okay, um, I did mention to Cheryl that I will be at Charter Day Friday, Saturday and Sunday. That if there's a flyer with, with information on there, that I can put it on their cars. I'm not gonna hand it to the parents because they're gonna be walking through, they're not gonna wanna have a piece of paper in their hand. But if I can put it on their cars and just, you know, let them, here's the information, so you have it. Um, so I am willing to do that as well, I'll be there all three days.
Thank you. Yeah, we're actually working on a flyer that we're hoping to uh be ready by Wednesday.
Mhm, mhm.
Okay. Okay.
Cause we wanna see if we can distribute it at the town meeting as well, uh and I think the cutoff is uh Wednesday end of day.
Yeah. Okay.
So by this weekend, we should have something and uh we can connect on that one.
Okay. Okay.
Jen is working on that one.
Mhm.
And thank you.
I have two unrelated questions that I um actually, well, one is related. So if um I will be one of the teachers that is cut, um if this doesn't pass, which is just a reality. But would I still be able to advise the class that I've been advising up till ninth grade?
Uh, I don't know.
Um, is there rules on that? Just a question, the kid, the kids.
Do you mind, do you mind uh catching up with uh Cheryl afterwards on that?
I can't.
No, that's fine, cause the students had asked me, I said, I don't know how it works, I'll ask.
Okay.
And then um another thing that I just wanted to make you aware of is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary is coming up next year, which you all um know. But Tammy Bebo uh reached out to me, she knows that we do the bonfire, um as the class of twenty eighteen, we do it every year. So she reached out to me and said, would you be willing to partner with us and Kicks one hundred point nine and do a concert and a bonfire? Where Kicks one hundred point nine would get the country singers, they would do all the advertisement and pay for it and it would be at Dufresne Park. But the junior class would earn the proceeds from it, so we would sell the tickets for it, we would get that money. We would also have a food cart where we sold hamburgers, hot dogs, chips, soda, water. And then because it's a Kicks one hundred point nine, they would have to go through the town process of having um a beer tent. And going through all the laws that they do there because Kicks one hundred point nine usually, like, I don't know if you have ever heard of the Hatfield Bonfire?
I've heard of it.
So it's a huge fire, um, and it's, they usually sell it for forty dollars a ticket, um, and it benefits the fire department at Hatfield. Um, so all the proceeds go to the fire department and it helps them earn money for trucks and whole bunch of things that um the town can't pay for. So Tammy Bebo said that, you know, we'll work out the technicalities of it, but would you guys be willing to partner? So, I should ask you guys permission first.
What, what is the, what is the, what is the?
We're looking at October twelfth Columbus Day weekend.
Okay, so just like everything else that we approve, if you can put it in a, in the form of a proposal and then bring it here, then we can formalize it.
Okay. Okay, so I don't really know any of the details, she just said Kicks one hundred point nine.
Again, Cheryl would be the best person to talk to.
Yeah.
Okay, cause all she did was say Kicks one hundred point nine is on board, stay tuned.
Yeah. Okay, we'll have to talk.
Yeah. I think you should get paid by that, maybe, you said, you said it so well so many times.
Stay tuned. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Crystal. Um, so this is it for the discussion of the impact, any questions? Okay, so then we go to the communications part, right?
Mhm.
Okay. Do you mind if I start with hopefully the simpler question? Uh, we are still planning on holding a school committee meeting uh before the town meeting, is that still the case?
Well, that was what we, that's what we were hoping for, now, and you said something about the meeting starting at six thirty.
Okay. Yeah, the meeting seems to be at six thirty as opposed to seven, so that kind of uh moves the start of our intended meeting as well, but we're hoping to do it at uh.
On the nineteenth.
On the twelfth.
I mean, the twelfth, are you sure?
Yeah.
Because I saw the sign outside town, uh outside the town offices there and I, I could've sworn it said seven o'clock.
It did, mhm.
Yeah.
Seven.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Um, so school committee wanted to have a meeting prior to the town meeting vote, June twelfth?
Yeah, for the stabilization.
Okay.
Yes, so the town website, continued annual town meeting says six thirty, that's where I looked.
Okay.
But I will be very happy if it's seven, then that gives us the opportunity to.
What does it say?
Get together, six thirty says.
No, what is it?
Continued annual town meeting.
Okay. Well, I, it's, I know it says seven PM.
It does.
We saw it.
I may be even if I lost some time.
Yeah.
So there's an error somewhere, we're.
Those good.
We're trying to make sure we're not there at six thirty.
Yeah.
Here, I'm just gonna look at.
Maybe they just keep using the sign without changing it.
That could, that could work in our favor, you never know.
Oh, it's finance committee.
Finance is at six thirty.
Yeah, they put it under town meeting, finances at six thirty, so I guess we're, we're gonna be okay.
Yeah. So, okay.
And where is their meeting?
Uh, probably in our gym. They, that's, that's how they, they usually do it, yeah, it's in the gym, we can do it in the cafeteria.
Yeah, the website has six thirty.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have dual meetings, they're gonna have their meeting at six thirty more.
You're talking about dual meetings or dueling meetings, which one is it?
No, the first one.
Okay.
I'm, I'm in no mood for duels.
Simultaneous.
Simultaneous.
Okay, yes, that's, that's what it would be and that's okay. Uh, we have simultaneous meetings with the select board all the time, but they're at the other end of the town.
Uh, well, this is a little different because we are convening uh for, for a, a single purpose.
Right.
At this continued town meeting. I mean, the way I envisioned it was we were going to be in the gym.
It's a. Uh, okay.
And hopefully as people were filtering in, they were gonna be coming in, you know, thirty minutes earlier.
Me too, that's how, that's what we talked about.
Um, we may be better off in the cafeteria, it seems to me, then we would not have to be, we would not have to. Uh, be distracted or disrupted with folks coming in.
Setting up the street.
Uh, setting up the place and all that, we would have our meeting the same way we always do. And it's right next to the gym, so anybody who would like to come and listen in or if they wanna ask questions as part of the visitors. We can even extend the visitors' comment section and uh have that conversation.
Yeah, just, just, to your point, I feel like we're losing a captive audience.
Uh, that's what I think.
Being, being any of them, that's, cause they would, they would come in, sit down and be forced to listen to what we were talking about.
But.
Yeah.
But the finance committee's already in there.
Whereas.
Yeah, they're already in there, so we don't have that option.
Right, right, whereas, whereas for us, they have to actually seek us out.
Right.
Unless you ran it five forty-five to six thirty.
I, there's no way I can make it there for five forty-five, but that doesn't.
Six to six thirty, a half hour?
We would have to be so crisp.
Yeah.
Because the, the whole purpose of this is to communicate, right, it's not just to sit around and have a, a school committee meeting.
Yeah. And if you're busy till six, you're not gonna make it there for six anyway.
I can get there, the earliest I could get there is six o'clock.
Okay. It's up to the committee, um, however everybody feels most comfortable, uh I'll be, I'll be good with that. Obviously, one hour would mean a little more flexibility, but uh our message by that time has to be crisp and to the point anyway. Uh, it's simply um answering some questions if folks have any question as part of uh our dialogue.
Mm.
If not, just sharing the latest uh shape and form of what we're gonna be sharing with the town, so they get to hear it maybe a couple of times, I don't know.
I mean, if, if most of us could make it earlier, it wouldn't be bad for us to start at least allowing people to come in and ask questions and communicate. And, and keep the meaty part for when you get there, you know what I mean, like?
I, I don't know, I, it, for some reason, it just feels like we need to be in the auditorium, in the uh, in the gym.
Right, so what I'm saying, but I'm saying like if we, I, I think a half an hour is cutting it really short.
I, I agree.
But if we start a little earlier and save anything really important for when you're there after six.
I have full faith in the committee and the superintendent.
Yeah.
Right, but you know what I mean?
And if, and if you started at five forty-five, at least that would give a full forty-five minutes for.
Exactly.
Stating our case, right, hopefully in a very crisp and clear way and then having folks ask questions as we're moving along.
Yes, I would, I would prefer to go um to six twenty-five.
Mhm.
Yeah, and give, yeah.
Yeah, cause we don't wanna just, you know, it's not, uh, really, so.
Yep.
Yeah, just, well, I mean, I just don't see a lot of people, the same captive audience coming in that we would've had, it's probably not good.
I just, I don't know.
No, but I think we're now we're saying we would go to the gym.
No, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, but I mean, they wouldn't.
It'll still be, people don't come in until six thirty.
It's gonna be like an hour before the me, almost two hours before the meeting.
I know.
Yeah, so here's the thing, uh, we can't, we can't choose who's gonna be, I mean, it's not really our call. If folks have the time and uh ability to come and uh watch, that's awesome.
Mhm.
If not, we can't really do anything about it.
No, that is, that is a, that is a good point, I mean, a full two hours, you know, that's.
I know, the, the only, the only thing we can do is have it in the cafeteria and advertise it, market it, put it out there, get it out to the community.
Right.
So that they will know, at least the people that pay attention will know.
No, that's a good idea. Can we do that?
Mhm.
We're gonna be in the cafeteria, but we're, we're there.
Yeah.
We have cookies, we have cookies and coffee.
And you're all set.
Cookies and coffee with the committee.
There you go.
There you go.
Can they even have uh people coming from neighboring towns, I, I don't know.
Yeah, well.
Well, this, can't you put that like on the M I N?
Mhm.
Right, and on Facebook and on, you know.
Yep.
Facebook and Twitter and.
Time in the caf.
I mean, at least get the parents who it affects.
Yes. Six.
Six.
So we're gonna say six.
Six.
Six, I get.
Yeah, yep, six. And I'm gonna go till six fifty or so, because we have to sign in two for our.
Yeah.
Right.
At six o'clock and at twelve, right?
Yep.
Do you want me to ask the um National Honor Society or some student volunteers to offer babysitting?
Oh, that's a fantastic idea.
That would be great.
Says another week's why parents don't come.
Right, yeah, we hear that all the time.
Yeah.
So, let me see if I can get some groups together for babysitting.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great, we used to do that in the past, but uh that seems to have been forgotten, yeah.
It, it disappeared, yeah.
So, so that.
Thanks, Crystal.
That babysitting, strictly be for the school committee meeting or be for?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, no, it's for the uh town meeting.
For the town meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Because people always say they can't come because they have kids and.
That, that, that might be it.
Yeah, yeah.
She's got to enjoy one of these.
Yeah, I think it's really, they used to enjoy it because the students who came in, they were, they were great uh babysitting, so. Okay, so now to the communication.
Yes.
Excuse me. We're talking about the communication. Various levels of communication, one is written communication. Various levels of communication, one is written communication, uh, some series of, uh, stuff that we're gonna be putting in our Facebook page at the very least. Uh, which, uh, Jen started doing with the regionalization presentation already. Uh, if there are any questions, we, you know, I, we can answer, I guess between the two of us, uh, regionalization questions, if there's any.
Yeah.
I saw a couple of comments, but I don't know if there were questions.
There weren't questions, yeah, no.
Okay. Um, so as far as, what are, what do we wanna discuss next, the flyer?
Uh, well, the flyer and also the five minutes that you have prior to.
Yes.
Uh, the start of the seven P M. meeting.
Well, actually, it is within the annual town meeting.
I know, you're gonna have five minutes, right?
Yes, so.
Six.
Six, I thought it was, I thought it was, yeah, it was reduced to five.
Five minutes.
Oh, it was five, I thought it was six.
Five minutes.
Reduced, reduced?
Yeah.
That is going to be the, the most critical five minutes that we have.
It is, but he, here's the thing, again, you know, this weekend, uh, some good conversations and one of the things that I was told. You know, people can't listen, uh, for something for so long, one.
Hmm.
Number two, we are talking a lot of things that we are familiar with and s, many folks are still not familiar with those things. If we try to cram in so much in those five minutes, we're gonna lose everything, so. What are those three, four, five bullet points and maybe if we have a couple of charts on the flyer that we're gonna be distributing?
Mm-hmm.
Refer to the charts so we can, uh, speak to those. Uh, we, we can't try to do everything in five minutes. And we may even lose all the benefit of those five minutes, so how do we focus on the right things?
Hmm, is there any way that we can somehow have some? Um, you know, slides up for people that are very clear that don't need to be explained?
It will have to be outside because anything inside the gym is, uh, it, it's under the, uh, purview of the moderator and it has to go through her for approval and stuff.
I see. Mm-hmm.
Uh, for distribution.
Um, what, you know, what we just went through, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Just throwing it out there.
So is it reduction? So, yeah, if it's outside the gym where people can look at it as they're coming down the hall or something?
Mm-hmm. Or even if we're in the cafeteria, I mean, they have, um, they have something like that. Um, I, I don't know how much information you can get. Because they do all kinds of videos and, you know.
Yeah.
I think it's really important that we're clear about how much we've already cut over the last three years.
We, yeah, that was something that we.
Yeah, did we get that information from Chivas?
A total, a total number, a dollar amount.
You do have that information?
Um, I don't have for, I have for last year, um, and we're working on getting, um, the year prior. Um, I think I put it in here. I think dollar amount and positions. Right, so, um, actually, I did not put it in your.
You have it, you said?
No, I'm, I think we should, we should show dollar amounts and positions, classes, what we've cut, yeah.
Right. Well.
So. If we can.
Yeah.
But if you show that, then we have to show the impact in the room because. I think the, uh. I think one of the things we have to play into is we just spent a ton of money bu- building that school next door. We don't want it to be empty when it's open, right, I mean, that's kind of. The thought process you have to get people to understand is we've already committed millions of dollars to the school, now it's time to make sure this school has students in it when it opens, right?
Yeah.
So for last year, um, the reductions that, uh, were not staff related, um, but that are not, um, that were not put back in the budget. Uh, was a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, um, it's the school committee expenses, late bus, maintenance reduction, middle school sports, middle school. Sports buses, field maintenance, five percent reduction in school supplies, all of the team leader stipends, which, um, is. Um, just about thirty-one thousand, the club stipends, um, some of the clubs that were eliminated and then a substitute stipend. In addition, last year, there was a reduction of a school administrator, a grade two, a grade three and a grade four classroom teacher. And a point five guidance teacher at the Grandpa Junior Senior High School. Um, one of the things to remember is that one of those elementary positions was brought back as the shared position, um, but, uh. You know, there are still a tremendous amount of, um, resources and staff positions F T Es that were not put back in the budget, um, this year that were reduced. Um.
So from where we started and where we ended up, and I'm just speaking from memory only, it was close to, close to five hundred thousand dollars. Part of it was, uh, us finding some of the, uh, realignments and efficiencies and all that.
Mm-hmm.
Part of it, as you said, especially at the elementary level, the classroom teacher eliminations, uh, the, the, the middle school, um, athletics.
Mm-hmm.
And related, uh, transportation costs and all that, those were all, uh, savings, but there was impact, uh, that came with that on personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and programs as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, I, I had, uh, the last several years, it's just that, um. I basically burned the, uh, hard drive on the laptop that had all the information. So I looked actually at every single backup hard drive to see if I backed up any of that I can find it, otherwise I, I did save all that stuff, I, I thought I did.
I, I have, I have some information here.
So.
Uh, over two million dollars worth of cuts. Fiscal, fiscal year two thousand twelve, almost five hundred thousand, fiscal two thousand thirteen, six hundred, a little over six hundred thousand, fourteen was five hundred ninety-one thousand. Fifteen, three hundred and five thousand. Um, so, you know, we have the information and I know, same thing, I'd have to go back and start digging through stuff, but. It just seems as though T M S must have. An easier way of compiling this information than me going back manually.
So one of the things we've been talking about, um, with T M S is, um, really the inability to use the, um. Software package for accounting to generate F T E numbers and just run a report for F T E. Um, so we've been trying to compare budget to state reports, um, and that's where we get into, um, trying to make sure that our numbers are correct. So that we're not misrepresenting anything, um, and, you know, the fact that, you know, we're going back through town meeting reports to talk, to discover what the votes were taken. Um, and to see, you know, there were town meeting votes where money was put back into the budget, um, but not to the full amount that the, um.
Mm-hmm.
School committee had asked for, and so trying to hash all of that out, um, is a challenge for sure and be accurate.
Yes. Yes.
You know, I, I want to make sure that we're accurate in the picture that we paint, um, but there clearly has been a reduction over time, over the past. Um, I would say since two thousand and ten, a clear reduction that does align with the reduction in enrollment, so again, the idea that. Um, we are not reducing expenses or we're not reducing staffing relative to a declining enrollment is not the case, we have been. Um, to what degree, that's, that's, I think, where we, where we're trying to develop that narrative.
So are we, are we going to have that information?
Yeah, so Mark was working, um, certainly all day today, but, uh, we'll be working tomorrow too, just to make sure that we have the right numbers.
Yeah, going for, we have to figure out a way, because every year we come back to the same spot and.
Mm-hmm, that's what I, yes.
Well, that's your data management.
That is, yeah.
Yeah.
You just don't know where to find it, I mean, it really is difficult, it's a challenge.
Yeah, mm-hmm. We need to be dumping it into some kind of folder.
Mm-hmm. Well, and it's really the accounting software and as we've been talking about, Softrate, allowing us to have a better handle on that, um. And that needs to, um.
But at the very least, we can, we can create a spreadsheet. At the end of every year going through this budget cycle where we know clearly what has been. Eliminated or reduced or whatever it might be, so that we can compare it to the year before and also keep, keep, keep the information moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
So if I look at the, uh, Department of Education data, uh, this is. Raw data, uh, in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, I believe, we had eighty-two point one F T E teachers. Uh, this year we have fifty-seven point eight, uh, which is about twenty-five positions fewer than what we had so many years ago, so that's. That is about, well, what is it, one-third, although, although, uh, less than one-third of our, uh, teachers not being here. Uh, again, I don't, I, I'm doing a very quick search and.
Mm-hmm. Right, and. Mm-hmm. And so one of the things to consider when you're looking at the D C data, yes, you're correct, we have reduced, but we've also. Um, in some cases, um, moved resources from the teacher line to instructional support, so you may see. Um, that kind of reduction in teachers, but, um, a small increase in instructional support or special education support, so. You know, that's what we're doing right now is trying to get through that so that we truly have an accurate, um, accounting of F T Es, um, because. Just the way they're reported, um, is, is a challenge.
So how do we wanna, um, you know, we wanna be able to have access to that information? For this meeting on the twelfth, right, um.
Yeah, we'd like to be able to show that the reductions have been ongoing for the last so many years.
And making the correlation to this vicious cycle, you know, losing students every year and then having to make more reductions and.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, of course, the challenge is whether part of it is alignment somewhere else and some of it aligns with some program. Probably, um. That will not matter that much because when you have so many, even losing a few, uh, resources in any organization is a huge impact.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about, you know, let's say it's not twenty-five, but it's, I don't know, fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
You're losing one-fifth of your population, uh, that, that is a lot, right?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we can align those numbers to the decline in enrollment.
Mm-hmm, and the other piece is the change in school choice that's resulted in less students coming in and more students choicing out. So all of those things are the levers that have been driving, um, because when you add to that, the fact that that results in a reduced minimum net school spending. Which means the whole thing is just declining, 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 and so we have to stabilize the base of the budget so that we can start to. Keep enrollment, increase school choice, keep our own students and really start to see how to turn the thing. So that people are staying in district, minimum net school spending goes up because we have more students, more students enroll with us, so everything starts to shift. Um, but having people have faith in the system that, you know, there's a commitment to. Uh, a basic funding, you know, the base of the budget, um, which I think to your point is both the stabilization this year, but also the override. I think being able to communicate that clearly, um, and what we intend to do with that to stabilize the district. And as a result, how we measure ourselves and are able to keep people here and maybe create some programs, so, um, that'll be critical.
Yeah, then it creates that turnaround.
That's create the turnaround.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Also, the last few weeks, and I think I shared this with you and, and Dan, um, uh, a- after one of the meetings that we had. It became more clear to me that, uh, even the simpler concepts may not be, may not be easy to understand if you're not intimately involved in the process. So it, it, um, for instance, uh, I heard that, uh, some folks did not know that our funding was based on the number of students that we have.
Mm-hmm.
So they were, they were thinking that by being residents, they were already contributing to the schools, and when I explained that, no, it's. Uh, highly dependent on the number of students that we have, therefore, that's the reason why we're emphasizing enrollment all the time. Uh, you know, they were surprised, that's one. The other thing is, um. The, the whole conversation around funding, the formulas and all that stuff, I think is doing us a disservice. I think we found the right way of, uh, speaking about it when we started referring to the nets, a net, uh, minimum net school spending.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But we should, even to that, we should make sure that everybody understands, it's not really us as a town calculating things.
Mm-hmm.
They hear some of that at some of the meetings and it makes it sound as if some folks around the town come together and calculate. It is not that, this is determined by the state and they tell us this is the minimum amount that you will need for your, for your district.
Mm-hmm.
And then the same state is acknowledging the last two, three years that whatever they are sending our way isn't sufficient. And that's why the legis, a good chunk of the legislature is just voting on the fourteenth to find new funding sources for, for, uh, public education. So it is acknowledged already that, uh, public education is underfunded, uh, currently. So if we can put those two together, then the, the, uh, question becomes. How come other districts are doing what they're able to do? That allows us to get into the conversation around how much those districts are spending beyond their net, uh, school spending, the minimum required amount by the state.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, our challenge has been that, and part of the onus falls on us, uh, again, you know, ma- ma- this makes it clear that, uh, our story wasn't clearly understood. And we did not really realize that it wasn't clearly understood. Uh, some of the towns even around us, they are spending, uh. More than us beyond that minimum, but some of them are spending substantially beyond their, uh, required net school spending.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they are doing it not the way we are about to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Those conversations take place before their town meeting and they have an understanding that some of that money will be spent. And I was surprised when I asked some of these school districts around us. When they are voting for their overrides and how they are getting all that money and whether it's destabilization, this and that, they said, no, we actually get that amount. And if that is not e- enough, then we get into the conversations about an override or additional, uh, additional funding.
And when you say we, you say collectively we, the town committees and they get together and they, they problem solve together.
Collectively, we. Yeah. Yes, yep, especially, you know, the three, uh, committees that got together, uh, a month ago here as well.
Mm-hmm.
School committee, select board and finance committee are key to make, uh, those decisions. And finally, the, uh, then we go back to that vicious cycle or catch twenty-two conversation that we've been having.
Mm-hmm.
Districts that are able to and do spend more to maintain the quality of, uh, their programs. They are the ones that are, uh, benefiting from our students that are leaving our district.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Because whether it's partially perception and partially reality, those students want to go to those districts where they think they're gonna be getting more. Whether it's academic, uh, athletic, artistic, uh, extracurricular, whatever it might be, right? Our challenge right now is to stop that cycle. To make sure that, um, at the very least, we stop it.
Mm-hmm.
And then we build on that program that we approved, the school choice program and bringing some of our students back. Uh, promoting, you know, social, emotional learning, A P.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, I saw John actually taking pride in the fact that, you know, so many of our students at a record level across the state. Had taken A P classes that you don't see anywhere.
Mm-hmm.
The highest that I think he was referring to was about forty, forty-four percent, seventy-five of our, seventy-five percent of our students that were eligible. They went and took, uh, A P classes. The challenge is this, if we cannot really support that program, the number of students that take A P will not mean much. Because we're saying that we're gonna keep the programs, we have to be able to, uh, make sure that when they take those classes, they also learn, benefit and they get the adequate support. If we don't have the, uh, the teachers who will be able to do that, uh, you know, they will just take the class and not necessarily benefit from the. From the content to the extent that they should.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think our, our bullet points can be, can be as simple as these, even this probably could be much. To make sure that folks understand why we are in the situation that we're in. Uh, I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we did not make sure that everybody understood. We feel a lot more confident with our direction right now. But we are not at a financial, uh, situation where we're able to implement all those programs that we are. Uh, we've been talking about when we started putting in place. You know, Carol's here, so I was talking to someone about our social, emotional program, how it started, how it exceeded its goal the first year.
Mm-hmm.
And how we are looking to even make it more prominent across, uh, the area. And there are some districts that are, uh, talking to us about sending their students this way because they see our program much, uh, well-rounded. Uh, much better rounded than, uh, their programs, uh, so those are opportunities that we're trying to create, but it doesn't happen. Year over year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we all wish it did, but it doesn't, but we, it seems like we're on the right track. We're all able to really speak to all these changes that are happening in our, uh, school district. But if we just say, no, we're not gonna. But if we just say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna uh support it for a little while longer so we can see all the changes, uh then, then it's basically uh
Yep.
falling, falling apart eventually.
So I think, um sorry, but what I heard here was um you have to stress, in my opinion, you have to stress the word, uh you know, the minimum required spending because that's what people really don't understand, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um I know, I know there was an override that's part of the spending, so where, where, where is Granby with um their, you know, their spending? With that, with that override, you know, money included, as I keep, I forget the number, it's like, I think it's around three, three fifty or fifty.
Three oh.
Three oh five.
Three oh five.
Three oh five.
Two thousand four.
But then, but then that's, that's the point where you show what South Hadley and Hadley is doing, like say, this is the minimum, that's, that's what the state calls it, the minimum, that, that will get you by. Right? The other areas are, you know, where we're losing students to, South Hadley, Belcher Town, wherever it is, this is what they're spending and this is what we're spending with, with our three oh five.
Yeah.
These, these are the other slides that um that I think are important to sh- to to show. Uh is how, how much other towns are contributing to their minimum net spending.
Then I think we have, we have that.
Compared to, we ha- we have all of that information, it's.
Yeah. No, all created and stuff, we have, yeah.
It's um.
Yes, it's how do we, how do we show it without overwhelming people, you know?
To show you, looks like.
Yeah.
We don't want people walking into the cafeteria and seeing twenty different slides, so this is where we need this.
Yeah. Right. Mm-hmm.
What we wanna focus on for the forty-five minutes or hour that we have, we wanna keep honing in on the same points.
Right.
We don't wanna veer off because we could easily veer off, there are just so many different directions we could go in.
Mm-hmm.
But there are certain slides that are really important.
But. Yeah.
And, and that's one of them, the, I think we need to emphasize
Yeah.
This is the percent.
that this is a town, this is a town problem that needs to be solved, it's not a school problem.
Well, I think that takes me to the other point I was gonna make was
Yeah.
That's us.
I think we have to talk about, I don't know if we have enough time to really do this justice, but
Yeah.
the system has not set the town up for success. So we have to, I guess, take the ownership of that and try to get the other committees involved and maybe change some dates around so that when we get into these big town meetings, that, you know, the people know what, you know, what's expected and why it's there.
Well, that, that is, is part of the long-term solution that I think we've been talking about is setting the policy, um to your point, Cheryl, when we had that, that all ta- all committees meeting, that um we're gonna formalize this process in a policy and hopefully we're going to be meeting on a very regular basis, whether it's monthly or every other month starting in October, so we can um we can, again, as a town, by February, have a game plan.
Well, and I think to answer some of the questions and some of the misinformation that's out there, um regarding why,
Right.
you know, it's, it's all, to their point, it's almost a nine million dollar budget, there's going to be some changes, you know, in enrollment, in school choice, and what the school department is doing to manage that budget um effectively and um so they're not surprised, um and so that they can see, uh you know, where, where there are needs, but where there are places that we can grow as well. Um you know, they have to be part of the conversation, you know, to, to listen to them say, you know, we gave you minimum net school three oh five, we didn't wanna hear from you. That doesn't work.
But that, but that's the conversation that we have every year, it's if we give you, if we give you this money this year.
Right.
You know, h- how do we know that you're not gonna come to us next year? And I think the, what we're trying to say is we're going to be back in the same situation year after year if we don't address it
We don't solve the problem.
and solve the problem in this way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In these ways.
Like every other school district in the state.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah.
All of them.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I know that a lot of folks are not taking this uh very seriously, but there's a good chance that by twenty twenty, we're gonna be in a different situation as far as uh state, at the very least, the state funding.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Are you talking worse or?
Yeah, to be.
No, it's gonna, uh they're actually trying to change the funding uh process and raise additional dollars earmarked for education and transportation.
We can't rely on that though, don't.
So.
They've changed the formula to the chapter seventy, so what they've been funding each student at has been the same since nineteen seventy.
Yes.
Two thousand seventeen, so they're changing that formula so that you get more per people.
Well, the formula actually already changed and it's, the proposal has been submitted in two thousand fifteen, October.
But it hasn't been accepted.
It hasn't because they don't have funding for it.
It's been funded.
They, they, they created the process, but they don't have the funding, so now they're voting to generate that funding
But.
and it's gonna be on the ballot, uh state ballot, next year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and if that passes, and currently our understanding is that it, it's not doing uh poorly, it's actually showing very well. If that's the case, then combined with that new uh funding process, it's gonna, it's gonna help uh school districts like ours. Because they're accounting for a lot of factors that we've been talking about. Uh being small, being rural, you know, all that stuff, it's gonna uh account for that.
I, I don't think that, that um we should emphasize that for this meeting.
No, this, I mean, this one doesn't fully change this year's situation anyway.
Well, not on, and, and if is a big question, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of unpredictability with, with
We can't guarantee.
our, our national, our federal government and, and I think we, we, we actually used this point at the committees meeting and the finance committee came right back on us on that, on that point. So I'm not so sure the if argument is, is, is gonna be that, is, is gonna be, is gonna be well received.
Yeah. A- and you may be right, but it doesn't change the fact that uh after June fourteenth, I'm assuming many of us will be spending some time uh at some meetings, listening, speaking uh about that legislation.
So if I can facilitate us back to what we wanted to have, which were the talking points of the.
Please do.
Mm-hmm. Right. We see. Because we did what we just said we were gonna do, what we're not gonna do.
Um what I have from the last time.
Can we just also determine, w- I think we all have good points.
What are the?
But I, I don't know who's gonna be doing what again, I thought last time it was clear, but we had some unexpected situation, so we could not really focus on that.
Mm-hmm.
But if it is the same folks who will be doing it, then uh then it's good, if not, we should determine who's gonna be doing what piece of that communication.
For the five minutes?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
For the five minutes. Oh no, I mean, I know that I'm gonna be speaking uh about it, but I don't, I, I wanna make sure that it reflects whatever we are collectively uh finding appropriate for those five minutes.
So what I remember us from the last time and what I think I heard you say is that um you wanted to talk about um the cycle that we have uh as a system created with um a, a lack of a foundation budget that supports programming, so that we're constantly in a reduction scenario, has not led to uh sustainable enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore, um has not been, has not allowed the system to stabilize. And that you also wanted to talk about um comparison net school spending, so that people could understand that compared to our neighbors, we are not spending the same.
Mm-hmm. I think we should start with that.
Start with comparable.
Because people, the, the, the question, the question is, why does Granby have this problem every year? And that answers that question. The answer is, Granby has this problem every year because we, we, we go by net school spending, period.
Right.
And other districts don't, and they take care of that previously between the committees, and that is what we're here to ask you tonight, is this is our, this is our plan to solve this problem. And then we can say, and the problem has led to this vicious cycle.
Okay.
And it's, does that sound?
Mm-hmm.
Because then we're answering the question right up front, 'cause that's what people wanna know, they just wanna know what the heck is going on?
Right.
How can we keep coming back?
Why does this keep happening? And can't we just fix this forever? That's what people want.
Right.
So I think if we present it as, we, we hear you, that's a great question, this is a good ans- this is the answer, why? And this is also creating this problem because people worried about the decline in population. I don't know, what do you guys think of that?
No, I, I, I agree that as we understand the problem, that's how we, that's how we view it.
Yeah.
I think that the finance committee views it a very different way.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and, and, and that's where it gets, you know, that's where it gets complicated.
So I think we should be really, really clear and succinct in what we say and um just as simple and to the point as possible.
But I think you, I think you also have to be very clear that this does not solve the problem. This is just another Band-Aid for another year until we really get down to how we wanna tackle the full net school spending, right? Cause we will be back next year.
Well, this is the plan to solve going forward.
But this year, we're still asking for a, a small override and money out of the stabilization clause.
Where we can. And we'll probably have to ask for stable, money every year.
But that's the point, we also have to be.
I hear you, so you mean upfront saying that, we're gonna have to do that, I hear you.
Yeah, we have to be upfront. Yes. Don't, don't stop and say, well, if you give it to us, if, or don't, don't even, yeah, don't even give that impression that this will solve it and we won't be back next year.
We'll never be here again.
Right. Right, 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 right.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yep, I hear you.
We're just trying to work toward building that base a little higher.
And for that same reason, I wouldn't want to say that we're gonna be back every year, because if there's a, there's a solution
True. Mm-hmm.
um that is, that is more sustainable, without really having to go through this process year after year after year, trying to tell the same story every year.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It, it would, it would allow us to focus on the, the administration especially, to focus on the right things.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I was trying to come up with the number of hours we met since the beginning of the year. Um then I, and I was counting the number of hours on, you know, YouTube uh videos and all that stuff, just added up. And then I realized that we actually had the workshops, we had, you know, one or two where the camera wasn't there.
Mm-hmm.
If you add them all, it's a lot of time that everybody's involved in. What Cheryl brings takes time from administration and the teachers, whoever has input to whatever she's bringing, then we put our own time, we could be focusing on things that will make this district
Mm-hmm. Right. Absolutely.
uh a lot better. And I'm not saying we should not talk about the budget, it's our biggest item.
Mm-hmm.
Uh but you know, we are really, really, we're spending a lot of hours on the same narrative, same, trying to explain the same thing because we have to go through the same process year after year at the town meeting. Um s- so that's good, we have to focus on that minimum uh required spending.
Yeah.
That's what the state gives us.
Mm-hmm.
The state gives us that.
Right. Right.
Um uh how about emphasizing that the fund, our funding is dependent on enrollment, on the number of students that we have?
Mm-hmm.
And the more students we lose
The more.
uh the, the less funding we're looking at.
Right.
Or at least not growing funding. Um and the more we reduce our services and programs, the more students we lose.
The more students you lose.
And that is the cycle we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
And even though the student um demgra- or the student population goes down, it still costs the same money to turn on the lights, to heat the building.
It does, the fixed, fixed cost doesn't change, yeah.
So for actually more, cause it increases every year.
Yeah.
So the cost is still the same, whether you have four hundred or six hundred students as opposed for the building wise, I said.
That was, that point was nicely made by Lou Barry at one of the uh select board meetings, who said it the exact same way, that
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
doesn't matter how many students you have in the building, you have to turn the lights on, you have to heat the building, and you have, you, you do incur those fixed costs.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't, doesn't mean that there are not other ways to find efficiencies, which, you know, we explored, whether it's the LED or uh
Mm-hmm.
solar power, you know, we're looking at all that, all that stuff, but uh
Mm-hmm.
again, it's not something that changes very quickly, that's a good point, Crystal.
Uh Emery, if I heard you correctly, um clarify me if I'm wrong, so in other towns, all the committees get together, finance, school, select, um if they have a select um board.
Not, not all, I don't wanna give the impression that it's the same, it's that way in all the towns.
Yeah.
A few towns that I've reached out to, because I wanted to understand how their process worked, the override and all that, they told me that they don't,
Right.
they don't necessarily go to override, they do, they go to override once, they need something beyond that.
Okay.
Um at the very least, they, you know, they have Belcher Town, what, thirteen percent over this year, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
And last year it was ten percent over, then it was nine percent over the year before.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So that's one, South Hadley, I think, is another one, they don't go to override each year.
Right.
Right.
It's understood that there's a certain percentage that are gonna go above and beyond their uh minimum net spending.
Eighteen.
So instead of going into, say, the stabilization accounts, they pull that money first before it goes into stabilization, is that kind of?
Hatfield was twenty-nine. That's amazing. I know the smallest.
That I, that process, I don't know, I still don't know the, the uh specifics of how they do that.
Okay. Okay.
Uh and there's something else that we have to, we, we're gonna have to look at as we're trying to formulate something for our own district.
Right. And we have a slide that shows that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and another thing that I found interesting too, and I was looking at the, the s- per pupil spending out of the three hundred and, three hundred and twenty-one districts, only thirteen districts in the state added less to net school spending than Granby. And we're in the bottom fifteen of per pupil spending.
Wow.
Out of three hundred and twenty-one.
But there are some districts that add nothing because they can't.
Very, very few. I think there were ready.
And we are fifteen out of all of them?
There was like two that had zero.
Huh.
All of them had something added. There was none that was at, is, there, there were two at zero, but it looked, something was up with them, like they had no budget at all reported. But yeah, there was some really surprising, um
Yeah.
yeah, surprising numbers.
Well, you're, you're already over five minutes. Just a guess, so.
If you, if you were my speech coach, I would be so stressed out, I would, I couldn't even, I couldn't even get a sentence out.
I think he's all right, he's got minimum net school spending comparison.
Yeah, I think.
Uh funding depends on enrollment, it creates a vicious cycle where school choice outgoing increases as a result of the constant discussion of reductions.
Yeah.
The fixed costs don't decline with declining enrollment. And then lastly, are we going to get into um what would result in the schools if six ninety-one was not voted?
Yes.
We have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that in the five minutes?
He talks fast.
Uh if it's.
Bullet, 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 bullet.
He talks fast and then people be like, what?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I, I, we need to caution here that we, this is not about cramming all the information in five minutes.
No, it's not, and that can be on the flyer, but that's pertinent to this year, and it should be, I, I, I think it should be on the flyer and we can leave it that way if we have to.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I, I just, I just think these messages should really be on the, the vicious cycle thing, and that's why we're here, and you're, that's why.
Yeah, we're gonna, we, yeah, that's, that's key.
Yeah.
That's key.
And somehow tie, tying it to the question of, you know, what, what kind of schools do we want in our town, you know? How do we envision a student gram- graduating from Granby High School? That's really how you end it, right? Because. To look like. But this is what it's about, is what kind of town do we wanna be? What kind of education do we wanna provide? Going back to Emery's point, it keeps coming back into my mind, do we wanna just provide a school? An education, you know, what kind of education do we want to provide? Because it does to um a larger degree come down to philosophical differences in what people's beliefs are.
Right.
Well, and you know, I've had the experience now of graduation and Memorial Day and watching the community come together and what they expect of their children, which is to be good citizens, to be in the Boy Scouts, to be in the Girl Scouts,
Right.
to march in the band. Well, where are they gonna learn how to march in a band if we don't have band?
Right.
If we don't have instrumental music? I mean, that is such a huge part of what makes Granby so special. Um is that unique experience that they have um in these kinds of it classes and, and learnings. Uh it's, and, and the town, you could see it, they, we were thrilled to be marching with the band and, you know, to hear them playing at graduation and
Mm-hmm.
to celebrate their, their work, I mean
Yeah.
tho- those are the things that.
Your school is your center of your community.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And honestly, to be very um fair to this community, the history of this community um shows a lot of care for education, as I was going through the education chapter of the master plan.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Um hopefully, the, the dates were, were correct. In nineteen sixty-four, this building uh started, in nineteen sixty-five, they started East Meadow Building. So a lot of folks decided that investing in education in this town was important.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um and this wasn't really a, a divisive issue, it was really a, an issue that brought everybody together, we have to find that. I, I, I really think that. I I I really think that a- and this is me being uh very candid. I think that part of the problem goes uh to the perception by our public that we did not really uh take good care of certain things for a while in this district. And uh and that's why we're just trying to tell them that that whatever that might be, we are really trying to change that and go into a different direction. And it's it's not about us.
Mm-hmm.
It's not about the five of us, the the administrators. At one point in time, we're not gonna be here. But there will be students in this district. There will be students who will look to Granby as the uh as the district to go to if there is school choice in the, you know,
Mm-hmm.
in the future as well.
Mm-hmm.
How do we how do we get to that point and how do we keep it? And the moment we actually find that right balance, the financial constraint will not be as bad. Right now, we're feeling the constraint because we're trying to balance a budget with fewer students every year. We planned for so many students and then the numbers go down.
Mm-hmm.
And then the number of uh teachers go down or staff uh overall, we'll lose those numbers, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're trying to stop that and then get to a point where we can become self-sustaining for for the most part or completely.
Mm-hmm.
And we never got that opportunity to last so many uh years. And we that that's that's our biggest challenge. I agree with you. I mean, we didn't uh without getting to a hopeful scenario of what might happen in the next so many years uh through state funding, increased state funding, we can actually find our own way if we can have the opportunity to uh to level this out and then see how we can uh pull it back up.
Mm-hmm.
Mm.
And thi- this is a very frustrating process, but very truthfully, I am
It's an understatement.
I am I I have been and I am very hopeful that the right things are starting to happen or did start to happen and happen in this district that we're gonna we're gonna get somewhere where we can find that stability. So are we good with those few bullet points?
Yeah.
Okay. Um the charts, you've started putting a couple of them. I have a couple to.
Need I need to cut almost all those words and represent those words with charts. That's how I usually work. So I usually fill it with words and then I chunk it down and then make graphics out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I will send you the couple of charts that I have that align with the other ones, and I think that's that's our quick.
Mm-hmm. Perfect. Okay.
And then have school choice numbers if you want them for.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, that's that's great. And then on the
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be great.
on the back of that brochure, should we should cuz I have some space back there, should we list out there what we've cut?
Well, we're this year?
Through the years since two thousand twelve. I think we marked that as sort of.
I don't know if we have all that. If we do have it, it would.
I have last year's for sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Um it would.
Or even the last eve- you know, year or two, we could say.
Yeah.
I I think it needs to be more than one year.
Yeah.
You know, we've been cutting like three years, even three years.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, these numbers that I just read off.
Mm-hmm.
Um we can't just do one year.
We we could use like the freshmen, the 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 kids who are gonna be seniors this year, we could go through their
Yeah.
sort of time at the high school and what's been taken from those that class every year.
That would be.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Let me take a shot at it because again, DOE data, there is an abundance of it, but it is can be pretty cumbersome.
It's raw data.
Yeah.
I'm I'm calling it raw, but it's it's because it doesn't really align with our story. They just dumped the, you know, number of somethings in.
It exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Uh uh if I can find, which I believe it is available, um number of teachers per subject.
Right.
And I will send it to you. Maybe we can get some assistance from TMS to tell us if if those numbers are correct or some of those folks actually were rotated into some different roles.
So that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. That's that's what we were working on last week and this week.
Yeah. Okay, good. So then we can we can align that. We can quickly chart the numbers and then add it to uh to to the flyer.
Mm-hmm. 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 Mm-hmm.
We shouldn't have more than maybe three, four charts and I don't know, ten bullet points. That's it.
Problem like departmental is easier.
Yeah, oh yes, to keep it.
So is the goal to get the flyer done in time for charter days because
Mm-hmm. Yes, it'll be done by Wednesday.
it's going to be a nice weekend and.
Yeah, the goal is Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, end of day Wednesday is what we were given uh as a deadline
Mm-hmm.
for to be able to distribute it at the town meeting. And then we're gonna send.
A deadline for what?
The moderator has to be able to see it and okay it if it's gonna be distributed in the uh in the area of the town meeting. So she wanted to see it.
So it can go.
You know, like when you go in that table.
Does it have to be in final form by Wednesday? Or or do we just need something that we can?
Cuz it's not a.
Yeah, because I think.
It's gonna be like this.
Uh pre- pretty much it's gonna have to be in the form that we're gonna, I mean, if we make the charts pretty area as something, but you know, the narrative shouldn't change really.
It's not improved too much. Next day morning.
Okay.
It's late.
Okay. Yeah, they have uh teachers by grade and subject report. So it's uh pre-K through, no, they don't have subject.
I think, yes, I will talk to TMS. I think the easiest way for people to understand it is department and class size at the elementary. Teachers per grade level.
Yeah. That we can.
I think that would be the easiest way. And that's just comparing what we have.
Yeah.
Right.
And 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 programming.
Yeah, so elected, the number of elective teachers, the number of science teachers, the number of.
I mean, you know. Yes. How it how it impacted music, how it impacted athletics. We don't we don't need, you know, we don't need the finite details. We need to know how it impacted music, athletics.
Right, cuz I remember those discussions.
Right.
Right. Art.
Art, academic programming, class sizes, you know, the the overart arching themes. Um we don't need to get into the nitty gritty.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cuz that people are just gonna start glazing over.
Right, there's like so much information they can take.
That's true. Yeah, we can't we can't you we can't uh cram in a couple of years of top subjects.
The stuff that we've been grappling with for three years.
Right.
No.
Okay, so um.
I don't wanna relive that.
We're good with that?
We're good.
Alright, so next we have the calendar, which has been on our schedule.
We're gonna um we're gonna have to postpone. I apologize. Um the leadership team was not able to meet before this meeting to talk about it. Um so if we could put it on the nineteenth. Let me rephrase. The leadership team did meet, but we couldn't come to agreement. So we need another meeting just to finalize it.
Okay.
So the calendar that is in our folder, it's not what was agreed to?
Um so you took a vote on a calendar that was the old one.
Is that the same old one? Yeah.
The there was a debate about could the elementary school change conference dates because they wanted to have more information about the students to meet and discuss with the parents.
Right.
We took that back to leadership. There was some conversation back and forth and leadership just hasn't finalized because what we do at the elementary impacts the high school.
Okay.
Uh with transportation and all kinds of things. So um we have some dates that were um hopefully going to finalize at our next leadership meeting and then we should be able to present something formal with dates and for your vote. I won't say approval, but vote.
Okay.
Alrighty, vote postponed.
With that schedule, Cheryl, one of the things I had emailed um uh Bill was that on Good Friday, which a lot of there's a lot of Catholic families, there was open house.
Mm, that's right.
Um so I don't know if it's gonna fall on that next year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what happened. A lot of parents were had to be at the church and couldn't go to open house. Um so it was a conflict.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Um so I don't know if that.
Aren't they closed on Good Friday?
The church?
No, not the the school.
No, the schools.
I think it fell on Holy Thursday, did it?
Um yeah, yeah, it was Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, cuz if the school is closed, it's.
Yes, and we were closed because we had poor attendance on uh two years ago last year, not this year, last year when we were open on Good Friday.
Okay.
And we had very poor attendance.
So it was a last supper that the kids were required to be there, thank you Bill, on Thursday and
Mm-hmm.
um a lot of parents couldn't go to the open house because of that. And they were disappointed. Um so I don't know if that would be something since you're looking at the schedule.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Alright. Um can this is upcoming, not today, right? Kindergarten policy?
You had some questions about kindergarten policy, I believe. So we perused other and got some information for you.
Is that for for today? Carol?
I remember.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
I I've just got some information.
Okay.
For you.
More clarifying questions, ready?
Yeah, you want you are wa- we're curious about other districts.
Oh kindergarten, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So this is what I thought.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hepburn. Think I've ever said that before.
Yeah, this didn't come out naturally.
No, it didn't. I'm usually yelling Carol from my office.
Or, you know, phone, yeah.
No, we have the phone with the strength.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
So you're expecting our questions that you have nothing to, okay.
Carol.
Well, I I just proposed something.
We are happy to um give this to you for your um review.
Okay.
Um.
So can we just put put it in context? And if I'm off, please let me know. You had come to us last time with a question whether or not the school committee would be willing to change our current policy.
Right, if we would have a um as you can see the way I set this up, it's what they have as policies and then possible exceptions or waivers.
Okay, um.
And we were looking to have an exception.
Yeah.
Similar to what Ware has an exception.
Based on entrance criteria.
Okay.
We wanted to have an exception um till the end, well, October first, um as long as they passed the kindergarten screen.
And it was a response to um a recognition that pre-K experiences for students have become um more a norm.
Mm-hmm.
Um particularly for working families. Um and so we have students that um would be potentially entering uh kindergarten with uh two full years of pre-K. Um and because of a birthday, may have to take a third year of pre-K. Um and whether or not a kindergarten experience they would um be ready for potentially if they were to pass a a screen that we use with the kindergarten student.
And the screening language you would put as part of the policy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because this doesn't say anything about screening.
Correct.
No, this particular example didn't.
Yeah.
Right.
No, but ours did that.
Yeah, right. I just thought that was important to clarify.
Mm-hmm.
Two years was the two years of of actual preschool experience and passing the kindergarten screen.
Right.
So based on this, it seems like um districts nearby, they're not really making a lot of exceptions for those students, so.
It.
It tells me that maybe that that's an opportunity, but the other side tells me, is there a particular reason?
School.
Are are we all sticking to the same date because somebody else did stick to the same date, which, yeah.
Pretty much. Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what was the cutoff that you were you were talking about? Was it pretty narrow window in a way?
We were October first. We were going October first.
Yeah.
Just extending it only for students for the month of September.
Okay.
If they had two years of preschool and passed the screen.
And they passed the screen.
Okay.
So it wasn't like we were just saying extending the the you know, the entrance.
Okay.
Well, we were saying.
Alright.
You know, rather than saying that your readiness for kindergarten has to do with your age versus your readiness as a, you know, a learner.
Right.
As a person, right.
And the screening is both academic and social, like emotional.
Social, emotional.
Right.
Yeah, it does. It does, you know, it's global.
So when can we have that policy the way we.
We could have that at the next meeting, ready for reading, first reading.
First, first reading?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Okay.
Groovy.
Alright. Thank you for doing the research. I appreciate it.
Awesome.
Groovy.
Groovy.
I like groovy.
Thanks, Carol.
Yeah.
Okay. Um do you have a superintendent's report?
I do.
Okay.
So a superintendent update is in your folder. It's very um graphic. It's picture oriented. And it is all about graduation. Um and I did include um an email that I sent to staff. Um and so I will read it if I can see it.
It's a great picture.
Uh good evening. It was graduation this morning. Our seniors were presented to the school committee and community as members of the class of two thousand and seventeen and students who have earned their diplomas. I was struck by the immense responsibility we all bear in bringing these students from the youngest of children to their young adulthood. I was not prepared for the emotions I would feel as I looked out across the gymnasium and watched parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and siblings shed tears, laughter, and joy as the graduation ceremonies ceremony was conducted. A sincerest thank you to all of you who share in the work of educating our children, who share in the work of making the deepest of connections with our students so that they, as they walk across the graduation stage, they shine with your light, your sense of confidence in them, and a joy of accomplishment that you have given them. In all of my years as an educator, I have never felt so blessed to be part of an such an amazing, dedicated, and talented group of people. I sincerely hope you are as proud of your students as I am today. While I have said this a thousand times this year, this evening, it means more to me than ever. Thank you for making Granby Public Schools a great place to learn and grow, a place where we focus on every child in every classroom every day. And a sincerest congratulations to all the families who had seniors graduate this year. Um I was moved beyond, obviously. Um it was an amazing experience for me.
I will agree with that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And yes, congratulations to uh the graduating class. Uh there 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 were uh a great bunch of uh students. Uh they were fun. Uh you know, the they they obviously loved being together and just they enjoyed their time and their speeches were very, very nice. But I also want to pay uh uh tribute to Mr. Bernish's uh speech.
Hmm, oh, that was amazing.
Uh um
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna find it on, are you guys gonna post it on YouTube too?
Yeah.
I'm gonna find it. I'm gonna make sure that, you know, we have that somewhere, whenever available. He hit all the right points and
I'm gonna. Mm-hmm.
all the important things about education. I really loved it. Uh and with that, I wanna thank uh G-Cam as well. Uh I was, to be honest with you, I was surprised that there were two cameras and a full table with sound equipment uh recording. It was al- almost like a professional uh studio doing the whole recording, so I'm looking forward to uh to watching it and hearing it again, so.
Mm-hmm.
I was struck by how um the students just love the teachers.
Yes.
And just how dedicated. They all felt that um the teachers were to them as a class and 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 just
Mm-hmm.
the reciprocation from the teachers. They really seem to love this group of students.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And um I, you know, as a parent and a school committee member, it was just really, it was very, very meaningful to be up there.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And was very emotional. It was nice.
Yeah.
Uh Mike and I were sitting right where all the teachers were sitting and to hear all their comments. Every student that walked that stage, the teachers had a story behind us, like a positive, nice. It was just
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I that doesn't happen at every school. And every single student that walked that stage, they had a connection with the teachers. It was just I've been to a lot of Grammy graduations, but there was something really special about this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Cheryl.
My pleasure.
Um were you able to go to your inaugural meeting at the collaborative or it didn't happen yet, right?
It it I didn't I didn't I didn't see it happen.
Okay, so we're gonna we're gonna write you absent at that meeting?
I didn't I didn't know the letter was sent out.
Uh we don't have anything from the uh building committee either because we did not have uh a meeting since last time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh policy subcommittee did not meet yet, so that bestays Cheryl then.
It's been all budget, friends, all budget.
Yes, yes. Was there anything else that we did not cover or supposed to? Okay, so with that, we're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Part eight three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Let me have a roll call, please.
Deanne Payne Rukowski, aye.
Jennifer Kern, aye.
Marie Mafoort, aye.
Emery, everyone, aye?
Yeah, Mike Simpson, aye.